Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
Good, good. We all ready to get started?
Yes, thank you.
Good, good. I'll call the meeting of the Safety and Security Committee meeting to order on Thursday, May 5th, 2022 at 8:30 a.m. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Woodmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Bladie.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Distello. Commissioner Galladay. Commissioner Johnson.
We have a quorum, right?
We don't need a quorum for a committee meeting.
Okay, very good. Meyer, was there any speaker cards submitted?
No, none were submitted.
Very good, thank you. I need a approval of the minutes of the March 10th, 2022 Safety and Security Committee, open meeting. If there's any corrections to be made, now is the time. If not, I need a motion vote to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call?
A voice vote sufficient?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those ayes have it. Item five, design solicitation authorization for professional engineering services, MetroLink Secure Platform Plan. Kevin, are you with us?
Good morning.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Kevin. Good morning, Irma. Thank you. Go ahead, Kevin.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good morning, commissioners, fellow colleagues. We are here in conjunction with the Safe Platforms program or plan to submit to you for discussion and approval a request to procure professional engineering services related to the design of the MetroLink Secure Platform Plan. For those that are joining us for the first time or may not fully understand or be aware of secured platforms, which we commonly refer to as SPP, Metro Transit would like to create a centralized, highly secure customer entrances on platforms that marry security-focused access control and enhanced fair media and closed-circuit television technology, complementing security personnel deployments. And just a little bit of history, in 2017, Metro Transit issued a task order to their general engineering consultants, which was Jacobs Engineering at the time, to investigate installing fencing and gates at MetroLink stations. Jacobs Engineering developed preliminary concepts and an initial cost estimate presented in a report titled System Barrier Study Report. This program laid dormant, and so we fast forward to fall of 2021, when Metro Transit issued additional task orders to the current general engineering consultant, which is WSB, to further the conceptual designs, investigate barrier and fencing types, as well as perform an emergency egress study to ensure passenger safety that was accounted for with additional barriers and fencing were installed. The work products for these task orders included 10% level concepts, which encompassed building code compliant egress requirements. This work was completed, these tasks were completed in December of 2021. So we are here today, and we would now like to solicit proposals from qualified design engineering firms to perform the final design of the security barrier gates, fencing, and camera installation. And again, this project will move forward in concert and collaboration with a fair media technology upgrade that's being treated as a separate project, but these two projects will have to marry in the middle. The two tunnels being built from opposite sides will have to meet in the middle. It's very important that that is executed precisely. So our leadership team is seeking the committee's approval to move forward with the solicitation of the design proposals, the evaluation of said proposals, and the selection of the design firm to develop the final plans for the secured platform program itself. In your packets, when we were appointed as a leadership group for SPP, our team constructed what I think is a fairly comprehensive overview of what has been done thus far, including timeline milestones. I'm hopeful that you have, all have access to that, but we will share that for your benefit, because I'd like to kind of go through that timetable with you. It also touches on what our SPP leadership structure will be. Now, I must say that the best that I can determine, this endeavor that we are entering into with safe platforms, quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, is the first time that that any system will realize going from an open concept system to full closure. There are systems that have been partially closed, but never to this extent. When we talked about the original conceptual review done by WSB last year, that was a very high-level overview of, is this possible? To also consider a complete egress evaluation to determine what needed to be done to make sure that there were evacuation points with the new barriers safely constructed. The 10% design, conceptual design, did not factor in the enormous amount of functional contribution across the board, operational, functional contribution across the board. There are a number of components of our operation that will play into successful implementation of a fully-realized secured platforms program. I'll outline some of those in a few minutes, but certainly information technology operations, our closed-circuit camera television program, all of those things play into that. So Andrew, if you'll go back to the time stone, or I'm sorry, the timeline milestones, just for a moment, we have outlined for you in your packets what has been done thus far. Some of that is a reiteration of what I just spoke of. So in August of 2021 is when the conceptual overview was done by WSB, and also the, they realized that there was an additional need for an emergency egress study. So this advanced through October of 2021, two task orders were issued, one for conceptual design and the second for egress. And in December of '23, we realized, and both of those reports were submitted to Metro Transit. In addition to that, in January of 2022, WSB, again, the general contracting consultant, wrote the scope of work for the procurement of a design engineering firm, which we have and we have prepared. And we are wanting to move forward with that. And then, of course, as we move into May, in April, we, I'm sorry, in April, we've established a leadership group to move forward and to bring this vision to reality. And we're hopeful that we can move through this process fairly expeditiously. There are things that have been done already that should give us a head start when we bring the engineering design team on. So we're hoping to maximize time and make sure that we we maneuver through that process very efficiently. Andrew, would you end advancing? So we're here today seeking your approval to move forward with the procurement process. If we receive your approval, the RFP will be published this afternoon at 3:00 p.m. With some manipulation and working with the president and CEO and your board leadership to your overall meeting schedule, if we're able to accomplish that, this is our projected timeline for the procurement of the engineering firm. So overall proposals from the suppliers would be due on June 3rd. The design review task force, including the PA would be completed, would be completed, the reviews on, I'm sorry, June 14th. And this is a negotiated process. Remember, we're soliciting for proposals, and once we choose a firm based on the proposals, then the cost impact will be negotiated at the time. So we don't typically talk about what our cost projections are during the, during this proposal stage until we can negotiate that agreement. And we're hoping to realize full kickoff and implementation sometime in the week of August 22nd, 2022. Again, this is with the approval of the CEO and your board leadership on some manipulation of your, your meeting schedules. We're hoping to seek final approval from the board on August 11th. And then, post-August 11th, what we will have to do is issue a notice of intent, an award letter. Then we will go through the certificate of insurance approval through risk management. We'll award the packet and provide it to the CEO for a signature, and then we'll issue a notice to proceed in a conformed contract. And we were hoping that our kickoff meeting will be April 23rd, I'm sorry, August 23rd of 2022. So with the manipulation of your board meeting schedule, we're hoping to really expedite this process. This is a procurement process that we have to go through to follow our policies. We are heavily dependent on our contract officers and procurement team to make sure that this is done very professionally, and there are no hiccups during, obviously, the procurement process. This, in my estimation, is the most important step, securing the right design team that can work with us and help us bring all of the different functions to the table and marry what will be a very complicated project is certainly very important from the onset. So we want to make sure that we meticulously maneuver through every step, because in my estimation, we have one shot at doing this and doing it right. I have full confidence that we will, we will be able to fully implement this program. So Andrew, would you advance, please? These are just things that you can preview yourself. It talks about different scopes of the projects. I don't, I don't need to go through every bullet point here. This is pretty much self-explanatory. So if you wouldn't mind advancing again. Are you able to advance again, please?
Do you want to pass through the intended scope of work?
Yeah, go ahead. You want to go ahead and give that review, and then I'll pick back up.
Yep. Good morning, Commissioner. So one of the things that we wanted to highlight in today's presentation was to provide a comprehensive summary of the design scope of work. It's important that as we go through this process, Kevin and the engineering team, we've established several working groups that are going to work through different aspects of this. To highlight for your reference, this scope will design the intent to provide fair collection gates at each station. The gates must be equipped with readers for cards, TVM tickets, and mobile phone barcodes. It also needs to incorporate a system integration feature that unlocks the gates. Very high level there. We must also provide ticket vending machines at each station, provide passenger-assist telephones at the entrances of the new gates and ticket vending machines. And as Kevin referred to, the CCTV upgrades, calling for one camera per gate on the outbound side. It has to be facial recognition capable. One camera per gate on the inbound side, video analytic capable, which means it's capable of detecting motions and then sending signals back to our control centers for action. We must also have one camera per overall gate for the viewing capability, one camera for overall, again, passenger people viewing, and then one camera per ticket vending machine and validator. In addition to the CCTV upgrades, it will also call for a fair gate canopy for each array to protect the fair devices, and then additional fencing throughout various areas that will be depicted in the conceptual drawings that we receive as part of the design package. So that encompasses the work. If you have any questions further, we'll defer to the engineering team or Kevin Scott, but figured this would be a good high-level overview of what this scope will include. Next slide.
And then, as we pick back up, we have developed a project leadership organizational chart. Obviously, we have highlighted some of the functional support areas on the right-hand portion of that chart. One, one of the functions that we have not included, that we overlooked, that will actually replace the data specialist support is our IT department informational technology, because we are building this technology out on a Genetek platform that we have in place that will be managed by IT when we talk about the releasing of the gates. So that needs to be included as well. But our design team that we bring onboard will have to marry all of these components together. So obviously, Mr. Roach has established our direction and our vision, and has provided a financial path, and has asked me to lead this project. So I will be the accountable individual from now on, taking this vision and bringing it to life. We've also included on our leadership committee Brenda Dirks, who will act as our executive liaison, and will maintain meticulous, meticulous meetings of all, or minutes of all of our meetings, and help with any administrative functions that we need. Chris Pollard, who is our lead engineer here at Bi-State, will remain part of the structure and will be, be there for executive engineering support. As we go down, Mr. Tim Nutler, who is actually on the call, will be the lead Bi-State Development Engineer for us, and he will oversee the contracted design engineering firm. And then Andrew Giasse is hugely important to this process. He has an engineering background. And we also have to consider all of the safety and regulatory compliance components as we implement this overall enhancement. And then, lastly, Andrea Jumper, who is our analyst here at Public Safety, who is responsible for program oversight and analytics. She will be hugely important, and I'll talk about that in just a second. But one of the things that I want to point out is that, and I heard this loud and clear the last time that we were together, that you, as a board, want to be kept informed every step of the way. And we will be working on this process every day. This will be a challenging mission to traverse, and so we want to make sure that you are, you are enlightened routinely as to where we are and what we're doing. So we have established a Secured Platforms Plan blog, and it is located on the HUB, H-U-B. And what that is, is that is a community, an internal community communication platform that we have here at Bi-State. So shortly after this meeting, you will receive an email from me with a link and access to the hub, where you will be able to access our Safety and Security section, which highlights underneath the Safety and Security section, the Secured Platforms Plan. And that will be a very comprehensive overview of what's been done and what we're currently working on. And then, in conjunction with that, we've asked Andrea Jumper to develop a project scorecard, similar to what we use during the overall security assessment when we work with the WSB firm. What we are going to do on the scorecard is we are going to highlight all of the functional areas that play into the successful realization of secured platforms, and we will be able to gauge what those roles are and where we are in this process with each of the functional areas. So at one glance, you will, you will be able to see where some of the struggles are, what we're working on, what issues we're trying to fix, and what areas of the project are moving smoother or are becoming fully realized. So we're hoping that you find this helpful, and Andrea will be leading that, that effort for us. Next slide, please. And Andrew, I will yield back to you to talk about the working groups that we've established.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. So as we kind of navigate this process, working closely with our engineering partners, we came evident that we needed to establish a number of project working groups. We've summarized them here for your reference, but the first working group that's critical is the Design RFP Review Task Force, again, reviewing the recommendations from the designers, and again, consolidating those comments in the RFP process to make sure that we get the design concepts that can be delivered. We also discussed the Fair Collection TVM and Data Integration Task Force, integrating all those systems to ultimately control the gate mechanism of this project. We've got the Constructibility Review Team that's going to provide all input and direction for the construction-related activities, just to verify onsite that things are being done that we expect. The peer review team, again, is going to be critical in addressing the design packages as they are released by the design team, 10%, 50%, all the way to 100% to verify that it meets all of our supporting function requirements that we've listed there. And then, lastly, one of the important ones, the Safety and Security Certification Review Team, again, certifying this for passenger customer usage. We have a series of design criteria that we have deemed safety and/or security critical, and it's important that we ensure these items are met throughout the design phase and in the constructability phase of the project. So that encompasses our team. I could see this maybe growing to a few more kind of alternate working groups, but this is our intent currently to drive this project forward.
Next slide, please. And lastly, my information, again, I was asked to lead this project, and I'm proud to do so. I'm proud of the work that we've done. Quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, over the two and a half years, I think we've made some significant progress, and we look forward to making sure that this is a professionally implemented program that impacts our product for decades to come. So I will be the fully accountable individual going forward, and if you have any questions, you all know how to get a hold of me, but I will assure you, and hopefully, we've shown you today that we will keep you fully informed of where we are and what we're working on as we move forward with the project. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're requesting permission to move forward with the procurement process for the solicit proposals for the design engineering firm.
Thanks, Kevin, for that report. Is there any questions left for Kevin?
I have a, I have a couple. Can you all hear me? Okay. Um, yes. I don't know if Kevin knows this, or maybe, maybe Talby's there, but how much did we spend five years ago on the studies and everything from this Jacobs group?
I would have to yell to someone else on that.
Yeah, Commissioner Cox, I do not know. I will check into that. That is, that did provide some of the basis and pricing that helped us with the estimate that we've used to try to use, use some of the pricing to come up with an estimate for the program. I do not remember what, how much the Jacobs study cost, but I'll be happy to forward that. I believe they were our on-call engineer at the time, and that now is represented by WSB. So I will
I would be curious, because I just didn't want, you know, a big, long study that was five years ago to go to waste. What did we use for that? My, my thing is, and Kevin, I really appreciate, you know, you walking us through it. I guess, you know, and I'm speaking for myself, and I feel like that the public is in the same spot. We just want this done yesterday, and I appreciate everything, you know, wanting it done the right way professionally, but I'm just trying to figure out how to move this process along. I appreciate the timeline of where we're, where we were and where we're at, but what is the timeline moving forward? I keep asking, because I want to, I want to show people, look, we are actually getting there. We're, we're, we see the finish line. Where is the finish line? Because five years ago, we were talking about this. And so where do we think the finish line is going to be? Is it going to be next spring? Is it going to be in five years from now? You know, and it's like, that's where I see my frustration, because I want the public to see, see actual movement, not just hear about it. And so when I see this, you know, we, we closed the bidding process June 3rd, but then I guess we don't even have a meeting with whoever we select until almost three months later. Can we move that up a little bit?
There are procedures that we have to follow through the procurement process, and like I said, I'm heavily dependent on our procurement department to walk you. Let me walk you through a little bit more of the detail on the schedule itself. So if we go out, if we go out to, if we publish the RFP today, they have an opportunity, once that's published, to submit questions, deadlines regarding any clarifications to the RFP that we present. That deadline, based on our policy, is May the 12th. Then we have an opportunity to provide responses to the RFP. That would be slated for that deadline for us to respond to the RFP would be May 19th, and then their final proposals would be due on June the 3rd. We would begin, so then our procurement department would process those proposals, and then we would establish a review committee, which we really already have. They would begin, we would begin around one of the reviews of the proposals on June 7th. Each of the members of the committee get to score the proposals and resubmit those, and then there's a round two consensus meeting to come up with what our final recommendations are, and that's slotted for June the 21st. And then we go into the negotiation, the cost negotiation process with the firm that selected. So this is a large project, and our ability to negotiate with the design firm will take a little bit of time, but we're hoping to initiate that on or before June 28th. And then I'm asking for, we will be preparing a briefing paper for your board, and we're asking for, in conjunction with the Safety and Security meeting that's scheduled on August the 11th, we're asking for a, a full board meeting so that we can present the proposal for your approval. If we didn't manipulate, if we didn't request to manipulate your.
What happens in July? What happens in July? The whole month of July, what happens in the whole month of July?
Um, that is a, so if I, if I'm reading this right, the project approval for cost proposal will be slated for July 1st. So we have until July 1st to reach an agreement with, with the firm that we select. And then we have to have the briefing paper approved for your board, and then we will send out and have the briefing paper reviewed by July 14th by all members, and then we will submit it hopefully to your board on August the 11th.
Okay. My thing is, I'm all for the RFP, getting it out today. I think everybody is. I get frustrated. I know everybody does. Government moves slow. I get it, but it just, it's, I just want it to move faster. And my biggest thing is, I want everybody on this board, and this could be the biggest thing that we all do to help MetroLink. I believe that this will make it safer, and we could all be proud of it, and we all want to see it happen as soon as we can. And so that's all my, my questions are, just to try to push it along as quickly but as professionally as we can. So.
So Kevin, I think in a nutshell, as what I'm hearing Commissioner Cox say, is any movement that we can speed those timelines up, we would ask that that be done, and I know you're going to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Could we go back to the, the very, we did not show the second slide. It's titled overview. Could we show that for a second?
Yes. Can you do that, Kevin?
For the benefit of the media that may be following us and our, and our customers, it's a very good macro overview that possibly the media can understand, if that's possible. It tells what we're talking about, and rather than go into great scope of detail, for the traveling public, the most visible sign will be a turnstile system with all the enhancements, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want it, in case the media is watching, they can jot this slide there, describes what the overall intent is and what the project involves overall. Thank you.
Mister, I would like to add, if I may. Mister, I would like to add, if I may. And then going back to Commissioner Cox's comments, which we completely understand and are well received, there are a lot of technical functional components that have to play into this overall project. Everything from the integration of new fair media to the reconfiguration of CCTV and overall technologies. All has to be integrated where it works precisely. It's not just about the fencing and the gating. If we focus just on that and the overall build out of SPP, we will get to the end of this project and we will face difficulties in getting everything to work in concert. So I understand the need to move this forward and we will certainly, as we bring the design team on, look at ways where we can expedite some of the processes and not duplicate some of the things that have already been done. But we only have one shot at this. And I have to make sure that we traverse this where I can assure you at the end of the day, when we say we're finished, that everything works in complete concert with each other.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Moore.
This is Deborah Moore. Because of my, you know, recent engagement with the board, the question is, are there revenue dependent relationships that must be enhanced or minimized as part of this process? Because this process will be very disruptive, it appears to the system once it starts. And I, and I, you know, am in total agreement with Commissioner Cox. You know, that if we can expedite, let's expedite. But are there relationships that are out there that need to be, have termination dates or enhancement dates that have to do with the many attempts that have been made to improve safety and security on the system?
Kevin, can you give a answer? Let me, if I can address that chair. Good morning, everybody. This is Toby. So what this really represents is a shift from what is almost the political and financial reality of this large movement of changing essentially what our, what our transit system is to the request from the board of commissioners to get down to some of the technical details. Very relevant, essentially answer a lot of the questions of the commission themselves. And move where, instead of asking me for those larger high level questions as far as how do we build a system like this financially? To then get into some of the very, very onerous detail that we had. I would remind, I would remind everyone that this is 46 miles of light rail infrastructure with 38 stations, several of which have multiple entrances. This is a huge project. If you then add, for instance, that we have Fair Collection Media involved, it gets even more huge. I would represent it as we have, we have estimated this project at however, a $52 million project. This is a $52 million project that has every bit of a $300 million project of type infrastructure. There are multiple layers that are involved in this and I, I think the team has done a pretty good job of, of detailing that. And unfortunately, some of that does require some time. Also, the rigor of those estimates are absolutely key in these coordination. I get asked not only once, not only twice, but multiple times about the rigor of those estimates to be sure that we can bring this project in on time and on budget. But in order to do that, I have to listen and pay attention to the discipline of these professional teams. To be more specific about Dr. Moore's question, when we get into the slide on project working groups, for instance, those fundamental coordination pieces, we have an obligation to several of our most important of all of our partners, including for instance, St. Clair County, to embed representatives from our political jurisdictions within these working groups so that we have an integrated buy-in to the decisions that we were making. For instance, the Fair Collection and SCADA integration has to be coordinated with representatives from both sides of the river and we all need to be engaged in a joint decision. Unfortunately, this does mean that there is the need for adding of time and coordination. And unfortunately, that affects our schedule. So there is that tension between professionalization and detail and schedule. Yes, we want to move the timeline up as much as possible. But also within the trust relationship that I have with this board and that this, this team has with this board, it's also being realistic about what we think is an obtainable goal. I do think that once the infrastructure is in place, that there will be opportunities for phasing in when we move on, for instance, a project on Fair Collection and Revenue. We will be able to start phasing in pieces of this, but I do leave this to the project team. They're going to have to be seeing what are logical pieces to put in place. For instance, do we start in Illinois? Do we start in Missouri? We don't, we don't have those details worked out yet. That would be some of these fundamental pieces that, that can be worked out and will be talked through, through the jurisdiction. I'm really not trying to hedge here. What I'm trying to do is be honest with you about that there's some, there are many hundreds of questions, I would say, that we can't answer yet. But I think we are creating a professional path that gives us the ability to do that. Some answers will come from me and many will come from that project team that you now see in front of you.
So Toby, I think if I heard Commissioner Moore, one of the points of her question on any of that private money that you've secured, is there any dates on there? Timelines or anything that has to be worked out with those folks? Agreements on how long that money is going to be available?
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry if I misunderstood the question. No, that, so I do have those, that funding is in place and most of it, for instance, is, as a matter of fact, in place. We did agree that some of it would come in over time, okay? But we do have that financial commitment from those private sector investors. And as a matter of fact, I could have Tammy Fulbright note that several of it is, we've already accepted with memorandums of understanding with those private sector actors. Now, several of them have agreed that it would phase over a period of time as we were able to put the project in place. But, but we do have those signatures and commitments. As a matter of fact, I would, and I'm sorry, please be, bear with me, but of the 10.7 million dollars of, dollars of commitments, we, we probably have about 45% actually in our possession right now. So I can assure the board that we do have the financial rigor of the, of the private sector funding is in place. And now of course, as we're moving forward on FY 23 budget, we'll be able to also land the other contributions from our partners. But we do need to be moving forward in a parallel basis on this, on this very large design criteria.
Any other questions for Kevin or for Toby?
I have a couple of questions and comment. First of all, I wanted to thank the team for the information today. I think it's incredibly valuable. I will also say that having been involved in major construction projects, I understand both procurement timelines and also that things do tend to move less rapidly than we would like, but the more planning on the front end, the much better the project is. So I applaud you for doing everything you're doing, including setting up particular teams to look at the integration of this. This is not throwing up some fencing and putting up some, some gates. This is an integrated system that needs to examine what we have and also integrated in such a way that it's going to be good for safety, but also good for customer service. So that's really important to me. I want to make sure that the ticketing and the cameras and the barriers themselves are all integrated in a way that is appropriate and, and yields the best outcome, both safety and customer service wise. So that, that's the comment I make. I'm sorry it's taking longer than we anticipated, but these things do. The second thing I wanted to ask actually was the question about whether or not this is a design construction RFP or whether this is strictly for design and the construction will be done in-house? Or whether another RFP is required for that?
This is strictly for design and we will bid the construction part of it. I think our anticipation is that we will bid construction both in Missouri and Illinois. This is strictly for design.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin, and thanks for all the work you're doing.
Any other questions for Kevin? Hearing none, I have a few. As always. And for Toby also. Toby, sometime back when you came up with that 52 or 54 million dollar cost for this project, that's been some time ago. And of course, I know there's going to be some shortfalls there. Any idea how short a fall that's going to be from what you originally had shared with me?
No, so this design effort, including engineers' estimates would be very helpful as far as qualifying that 52 million dollars. However, I do have a fair amount of confidence in that number is that so for instance, the reference to the 2017 Jacobs engineering study. One thing that I want to assure the commissioners is that there is a lot of professional study behind these numbers. And for instance, we referenced some of those very detailed, for instance, the barrier study from Jacobs helped inform some of these numbers so that they would be accurate. And including the, the work of our general engineer, WSP, embedded within this process. That's what got us to those numbers. The 52 million on the original estimate. So it is informed. I would share the concern that the construction market right now is, is very tight. And we are not sure exactly what, where the bid process will be going forward. However, I would note that a good deal of these estimates are more in the electronics and not, for instance, concrete. And, and where we've, we have seen most of the market move up lately is in kind of larger infrastructure type projects. And I think we should be in pretty good shape. However, we will be bringing these multiple contracts in front of the board and bidding them out. Obviously, although the 52 million dollars is a large piece, as you can see, there's different pieces associated with CCTV, different pieces associated with, for instance, gating, different pieces associated with, for instance, the physicality of the fair structures, turnstile, so to speak. So we will have to bring these bids into you for approval. It will be very, very complex. I do feel good about the original estimate, Commissioner, I guess is what I'm telling you. But we will be
Okay. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. I just don't want to get in a situation where we're having to go back to the partners or whoever and saying that we were way out of the ballpark there. So I appreciate that, that thought on that. Another thing, and Kevin, you can chime in on this, the 800 pound gorilla in the room. You mentioned earlier, the WSP study that was done, the scorecard that was out there that we all got given to us multiple times. And to my knowledge, one of the most important things on that scorecard that still hasn't been done is the radio system. And I brought that up numerous times. And I know that has been an ongoing issue. You've done a lot of work on it. I know Toby has, but you know, as Chair of the Public Safety Committee, that is very sincere along with, and as all the other commissioners said, I'm far this project that we're moving forward on today. But we still have to maintain that that WSP study outlined the communication as being one of their primary concerns for our safety officers out there. Any movement on that?
So we're working with our partners at East West Gateway. We're trying to establish another meeting with the new county chief. As you know, the solidification of a system-wide dispatching center is a decision at the law enforcement lead level. And we're trying to work with them. We have been very very specific about the benefits of that to try to bring, bring people to the table, but we're dependent on those leaders to reach an agreement and will continue to work through that. So I'm hearing what you're saying and I will assure you that I will not lose sight of that priority because of the SPP project taking hold now. So we will, we have a very good team in place. The leadership team that we've put in place for the SPP project is very sound from our internal teammates to our engineers. And so I look forward to working with them and leading the project, but I will not lose sight of our other priorities as well. That entire WSP process and the recommendations that were made, that was the best money this region ever spent. It formulated a blueprint for sound, comprehensive public safety going forward. So you have my assurance on that.
Very good. And I appreciate that. And that, that's why I bring that up because it was money well spent. But it's only as good as if we can get that scorecard completed and it's something that important for our officers out there. I think we have to keep that on the burner and and I know in speaking with you that you're going to do that. I don't have any other questions right now. Any other commissioners before I call for a vote on what Kevin has presented?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have just one question.
Yes.
With this new design, what percentage increase are we looking at for fair and ridership?
So any, any fair changes would have to be invented by the public and by this board. We are not contemplating any revision to fair policy, but it will come up in the next several years. There's no question. And of course, we will have to do a, as part of the FTA process, we have to do it an outreach of any revisions to fair policy. We are not contemplating any at this time. I will say, there is no question that this investment in security is aimed at literally as getting folks on our trains and buses. No question. I do think that the perception of security is one of the key components of the SPP project and therefore as a return to ridership, showing the public that we have rigorous security and rigorous CCTV assets on our vehicles is one of the things that will help us regain that ridership. So it's absolutely key. I wouldn't speculate on that, on the percentage of recovery, but that's the goal.
Very good. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Golly?
I guess it did for right now.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Toby or for Kevin? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request that Kevin has presented in his report today.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
And we need a roll call vote. Myra?
I have a voice vote sufficient.
Okay. All in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thanks, Kevin and Toby. Like I said, we appreciate the detailed report and I know we'll get more of them coming forward. Next item is the update on the CCTV upgrades and police department feeds. Darren Curry, this is for Information Lonely.
Yes, Chair. So we, do we have Darren on the line? I believe also Mr. Struckfest from the organization will be presenting as well.
Oh yeah, Darren had other commitments, so he asked me to.
Okay.
Very good.
If I could share my screen real quick. Can you see the document in front of you?
Yes.
Project number 2487 has a total project budget of approximately 6.2 million dollars. It represents the first of three scheduled CCTV upgrade projects. The first step of this project is the Genetech video management system. Procurement was initiated on April 29th with an expected delivery date of August 29th. Complete installation of this equipment is scheduled for September 18th of 2022. The second part of this project is the new real-time camera center and public safety dispatch center. Improvements to this existing space at Metro Bus facility was initiated on March was initiated on March 3rd and has an expected completion date of June 30th. We have a targeted opening date for the real-time camera center and public safety dispatch of January 2nd of 2022. The third portion is the network upgrades along the metro alignment. The initial procurement of extranetwork hardware for the Ewing Operation Control Center, Emerson Park, College and Memorial Hospital stations, that was initiated on February 1st and has an expected delivery date of May 23rd. Complete installation of this network equipment is scheduled for June 13th this year. This upgrade will provide increased bandwidth to St. Clair County 911 centered sites. Procurement of the remaining extranetwork hardware, it was initiated on May 2nd. We have an expected delivery date of September 13th. Complete installation of all extranetwork equipment is scheduled for November 13th of this year. If I have any questions on the CCTV portion of this presentation? If not, I'll move over to the state side. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question on the project that we've been waiting for some equipment to come in for the St. Clair County project. When, is that involved in this? When is that going to happen?
Yeah, so that's the initial procurement of extran hardware. So we expect delivery on May 23rd. And I plan to have that installed by June 13th.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I also wanted to bring up and talk about the SCADA system upgrades we're working on. We were given, we gave a notice to proceed to Rockwell Aerospace on April 22nd for the project number 2471 with a total project budget of $3.08 million. The detailed project schedule is currently under development. This upgraded SCADA system will be installed by December 30th of 2024 and available to support the testing and operation of the Mid-America Airport. And that's, yeah, any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Kevin, it might be actually your question. These, these upgrades just mentioned, is there a view toward what is coming in terms of the redesign to ensure this doesn't require a redo or an undo? I mean, and, and you can't know because you're only in the design phase. I, I just don't know how this is impacted by the planned work.
You mean over the overall SPP plan?
Yes.
Okay, so this is actually, when I say there are a number of functions that play into the successful realization of, of SPP, this is a, a project, a function of that project that is moving forward. And so when we talk about being able to provide feeds to our PSAPs in St. Clair County, when we talk about the reconfiguration of public safety dispatch in the build-out of the new time, or the real-time camera center here at our central facility, all of that falls in line with overall security enhancements that are included in the SPP project. So what they're outlining for you today, we're actually, we actually have a head start on the reconfiguration of these technologies that we would have to do anyway. So this is taking, when we talk about a real-time camera center, Commissioner Moore, we're taking the concept of viewing footage, not in a reactive perspective, but in a real-time capacity. We have a very fluid community that uses the transit center and we have to stay out in front of things. And the same ideology applies to providing the same feeds to the, the police PSAPs in St. Clair County. So there, this is right in line with technological upgrades that are included in the SPP program itself. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it does. So the only thing necessary is to ensure the RFP or construction documents ensure compatibility with the structures that you're putting in place with this CCTV phase. Is that correct?
That is correct. And our design engineers, once we have them here, we're working, working complete concert with Scott and Darren Curry and his team to make sure everything is completely aligned when we move into the construction phase.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question, kind of, kind of generic, maybe for Kevin, but how does this compare to other maybe government bodies or other businesses out there as far as the camera system that we have? And like you said, it's not a reactive thing that we're doing, but it's real time. How does it compare to others in, in our, you know, in St. Louis?
Currently or what our vision is?
What our vision is.
Yeah, so it's right in line with the industry best practices. There are a lot of large corporations that have implemented real-time camera centers in their facilities for real-time viewing. Obviously, real-time means real-time. And one of the first things that we noticed, and it was outlined in the WSP study initially when they did the security assessment, was, you know, these technol, there's more to security as we've discussed before than just beating hearts. You can only have so many of those, right? And so you have to do things in your overall security structure that complement, right, and solidify your program. And so the implementation of technology is one of those. The use of hardscape reconfigurations, SEPTED, all of those things play into, I, I term them as force multipliers in your overall security function. And so what, what we're doing with this technology, number one, the technology is being upgraded from analog to digital, okay? And then giving ourselves the ability to move forward to view footages in a real-time setting is, is, is huge. It's paramount to our overall security improvements. And so we are, you, you can see real-time, law enforcement refers to real-time viewing as, they sometimes will refer to it as real-time crime centers where they have view, views of different locations around the area. The other thing that we're hoping to do with the, the technology that we're using, it's the same technology that the law enforcement agencies are using. And so we're hope to really, once we bring our real-time camera center online, we're hoping to marry with their real-time camera centers as well.
I, I guess my, my whole thought or just my opinion and just general thought is, is that this will be done well before the secure platform plan will be done. And this is something that, you know, maybe you guys as leadership could reach out to the media without, you know, telling all, you know, secrets and stuff, but letting the public know that we're doing things better. And if you're going to, you know, do a bad act on the system, you're going to get caught. And that is one good thing that's happened, you know, since I've been on this board, is we have caught a lot of the bad guys. And you guys do a good work in there in helping St. Louis City Police and things like that. So that's a story I think that can be better told and we won't have to wait a couple of years to let people know that we are making progress.
One of the main functional areas of the overall SPP project is our MARCOM, our marketing and communications division. They will be heavily integrated in this process as we move forward. And you are right, it is essential that we start to tell the story and make the public aware of the details. Because we are, this is a movement that will profoundly make the system better.
Yep.
Well, Kevin, I think you'll agree, that was kind of the discussion we had when we started talking about the cameras in St. Clair County at the PSAPs. One of the main focus of that was to start to let the public know that if you come to those stations, you're going to have extra eyes on you from those 911 telecommunicators. And that, and I hate to keep bringing it up, and this is all great. I am totally supporting this whole project, as you know. But cameras in real-time is only as good as that telecommunicator can get that information out there to your officers. That's why the radio communications, it's got to be a priority to go in with that whole package. And from what you and I have discussed and Toby and I've discussed, those cameras that we're talking about putting in over here, that will be the first in the 911 centers anywhere on our system. And I'm hoping that that will spread over into the Missouri side also.
There's no question that the communications aspect is essential.
Very good. What else do you have on the CCTV?
That's all I have, unless there's any other questions about the technology or schedule.
Yeah, any other question? That was for information only. Is there any other questions that anybody's got? Okay, thank you very much for that report. Next unscheduled business, Toby, is there any unscheduled business?
No, Chairman, no unscheduled.
Okay, how about your report?
Okay, great. I, I will make it quick. So the report you saw today and the fundamental structure of that slide presentation is what this Board of Commissioners can expect to see on a regular basis. Chairman Miller specifically asked us to kind of start a regular cadence of report on SPP and that will be the structure moving forward. So please, I encourage all the commissioners, if there's an element they'd like to see tuned or changed, please let us know. We're exchanging information and doing it in a quick and concise way, especially in something so complicated, is one of the tools we use to communicate. So please, and also support of Kevin and his team is absolutely critical. Board support is noted by staff routinely. So I really would appreciate the board's continued full support of his efforts. I do have good news in that we did have the FTA regional administrator in town on Monday and Tuesday. And actually, we did make this SPP report and a full security report to the regional administrator. He was very supportive of the concepts moving forward, especially in how these security concepts can return us to ridership. It was very well received and he was very supportive of that issue. Additionally, we gave Mr. Matiaman a report on our operator assault working group. One of the very important aspects and of all of these systems is not only protecting our, our, our customers, but also our frontline employees. And so we have been looking at detail and working, and Kevin and Andrew Giassi, along with the operating group, which are Niece Winters and others, have been working to look at detail on an operator assault working group, working with concepts of de-escalation, working with some of those everyday challenges that our operator working group is seeing. And so let me please just assure this commission that in the end, all of these complicated security structures are there for that frontline interaction. We are about moving people and we are about protecting folks on that one-to-one basis. And I will say, FTA was very much in support of that. As a matter of fact, Mr. Mati, committed to trying to find additional funding. For instance, talking about some of those security and training aspects, and we are working together with our Region 7 on doing that. Also, we released the next quarter of fundamental statistics for safety and security. It is now on the website. I would note, we have a regular cadence of having those key performance indicators as far as security is concerned, and that is, is there and noticeable to the public. I think Kevin and his team have done a very good job at assembling that information. Remember, those data points come from our law enforcement partners. So it is not us scoring ourselves. These are rigorous statistics that we produce on a joint basis. And that concludes my report, Chair. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for Toby? If not, call for dates of future board and committee meetings. Myra, can you give us that update?
The next special meeting of the Board of Commissioners has been scheduled for Monday, May 9th at 8:30 a.m. The next Operations Committee, as well as the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee, will meet on Friday, June 10th at 8:30 a.m. And the next Board of Commissioners regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, June 24th, also at 8:30 a.m.
Very good. Thank you. The next item is if a executive session was needed. There's only one agenda item for approval of the minutes of the March 10th, 2022 Safety and Security Committee, Committee Executive Session. If there was no corrections to those minutes and no discussion is needed, the board could approve a vote without going into an executive session. What's your pleasure?
Let's just do that.
Yes. Thank you. So at this time, I'd ask a motion to approve the minutes of the March 10th, 2022 Safety and Security Committee Executive Session as presented as a closed record. Motion and roll call vote is needed.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. How about a roll call?
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayne Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Galdy?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladman?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion needed to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.